It is now seven o'clock.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name's Diane Marlin, Mayor of Urbana. I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Before we get started, I need to state that due to Governor Pritzker and the mayoral emergency COVID-19 orders, the Urbana City Council chambers are not open to the public during the meeting. Council members will meet remotely using Zoom webinar. The public may watch the meeting on streaming services or on the Urbana Public Television or attend via Zoom. All votes are roll call votes under the executive order and we are required to have at least one member of the body present in the chambers, and that's me tonight. So I'm, I'm coming to you live from the city council chambers. Okay. Well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Phyllis is muted.
Phyllis, you'll want to unmute. Just go to the lower left-hand corner and click the unmute. You got it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
I'm here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next up is approval of minutes from the previous meeting from June 20th, June 13th, 2020. July 13th, 2020, sorry.
I'll move approval of the meeting minutes from July 13th, 2020.
I'll second those.
Okay, are there any corrections?
No.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. We have listed on here minutes from June 22nd. Was that a mistake on the agenda?
No, that's an old set of minutes that had not yet been approved.
Okay. Is there a motion for those as well?
I'll make the motion to approve the June 22nd minutes.
There's second.
I'll second. Charisse.
Any corrections to those?
No.
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item on the agenda, any additions to the agenda?
I think there's going to be a change to the agenda.
What would that be?
City staff in community development has indicated that item number eight on the regular agenda would be brought back to the city council August 10th because there's going to be a few changes made to that.
Okay. All right, we'll make a note of that when we get to there. Next item on the agenda are public input and presentations. We're going to do presentations first, and we have two. One is we're going to hear statements from the two applicants for the Ward Two City Council position. And then the second will be a presentation from Ricardo Diaz on the efforts for the census 2020. So just a reminder, Councilmember Eric Jacobson stepped down from his seat effective June 30th. This person who will be appointed will fill out the remainder of his term, which ends on May 3rd, 2021. We had two applicants, qualified applicants for the position, a total of four applied, but two people did not live in Ward Two. And they have been interviewed and their references have been called. All the city council members received copies of the applications and CVs if they provided them. And so next week I plan to bring a recommendation for an appointment before, to a special meeting of the Urbana City Council, which will be heard, which will be held before the committee of the whole meeting. So with no further ado, I would ask, let's see, I would ask Julie, Julie, can you tell me, I never did ask how to pronounce your last name? If you'd like to unmute?
Sure, it's Laut.
Laut, okay. Julie Laut, and then we'll hear from Christopher Hansen.
Okay. Should I turn on my video as well?
Yes, please.
Hi, everybody. Mayor Marlin and city council members. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you all about the appointment to the Ward Two position. I moved to Urbana to complete my education and like many before me, my family and I fell in love with this community and have chosen to make this our home. My husband and I have owned a historic home in the Ward Two area for the last eight years, and my two children have attended Urbana Public Schools. During my decade here in Urbana, I've been very civically engaged and have developed broad connections throughout CU and right here in my own neighborhood. As you have seen from my CV, I have a varied work and volunteer experience. And through all of those experiences, I've assembled a complex and responsive leadership toolkit that I believe would serve me really well as a city council member. The depth of these skills were put to the test during my term as Chair of the Board at the Unitarian Church on Green Street, where I helped our congregation move confidently through the Reverend Florence Caplow's first year as our new settled minister. In response to congregational interest, I also helped shepherd crucial agenda items, including increased accessibility and a reimagined budget process. The church continues to grow and thrive in part due to the success of my leadership during that period. And I have to say I really thrive on being a part of productive change. And I believe that Urbana is on the verge of change. Because as we know, for all of its positive attributes, our community has not achieved equity for its citizens in many ways in terms of housing, food security, policing, transportation, and so on. And I acknowledge that this inequity is the result of centuries of structural racism. And I'm committed to working collaboratively toward equitable, equitable structural transformation. I also recognize that the COVID-19 pandemic has heightened the challenges facing our community. It is therefore more important than ever for our city leaders to be engaged with our constituents and aware of their evolving needs. We'll need to think creatively together to continue to provide the essential municipal services despite what we know will be a reduction in revenues. From advocating for a peer mentor program as a young high school teacher 25 years ago, through starting a small free pantry in my yard this spring, my leadership commitments have focused consistently on responding to most current issues facing my peers and my community. With your support, I would welcome the opportunity to bring my curiosity, my willingness to learn, and my desire to work collaboratively to this, to work with you all on this council. We must work together to address current issues while not losing track of the vision we have for the future of Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. And this will be followed by Christopher Hansen. You have three minutes, Chris.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. My name is Christopher Hansen. I assume many of you have become accustomed to my voice and now you can see my face while I talk. I've lived in Ward Two for 18 years now. If you count my undergrad, I came here in 2002. I lived in the Illinois Street Residence Halls and then I, I lived in Ward Two in an apartment building. And for the last 14 years, I've lived in Ward Two as a homeowner and a property owner and a business owner, and I've invested substantially in Urbana. The reason I'm, I'm applying for this position is I, I think the council needs voices that more accurately represent today's problems. And I want to see the problems, that these problems are responded to more quickly. And I want residents to feel heard when they bring problems to the city. And I don't think that's been happening and, and that needs to stop. I want to see the council have frank and honest discussions about difficult issues and, and that's what we're going to need to actually move forward. One of the biggest issues on your plate right now is the issue of policing. I've been arrested, I've been put in jail and been forcibly stripped naked and had criminal charges levied against me and was completely vindicated for a crime that never even happened. And so, you know, maybe I can bring a new perspective to the table. And as it happens, for the past year and a half, I've been working directly with the review boards, police review boards in Champaign and then also in Urbana, just to try to see those boards changed. And, and that seems to be something that the council is going to be discussing quite a lot in the future. So maybe I can bring some of those perspectives to the table. But all of that said, I, I realize there is a lot of other important business that needs to be done. At the same time, we can't drop all city business just to talk about policing. I get it. But I think we can do both things at the same time. I'm prepared to spend any number of hours required to, to get that done. And to a large extent, I already am. So I, I think as a business person, I could probably help a lot with the budget issues that are no doubt going to arise in the near future. And I'm entirely enthusiastic about discussing all of the issues that affect Urbana because it affects me and it affects my neighbors and everyone around us. So I think I'll leave it there. And, and thanks for giving me this time to speak and whatever your decision is, I'll see you next week.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, we'll have a presentation from Ricardo.
Thank you. It's actually myself and Sam Stewart from the Regional Planning Commission.
Wonderful.
We're going to share a screen to try to, you know, picture's worth a thousand words. Let's see how many words we can get in during this time. I'll need some kind of confirmation of what you see. I think Mayor Marlin, you're the first one on my screen. So is, are you seeing a white slide?
Yes, we can see the PowerPoint.
Thank you. So today I'm representing not just the New American Welcome Center. It's really a whole group that started at the beginning of last year, 2019, and we called it Count Me In 2020 because we knew the census was coming. And so we started gearing up over a year before. We were most interested, we started out as wanting to count the, the immigrants, make sure that there was a full count of immigrants. Pretty soon it turned into the ones that are not counted normally or the ones that are less counted. Sam, help me out with the language because sometimes I forget. But out of that, those less or the hard to count, we came up then with a way to keep track of census tracks. And so what we're going to show you has bottom line, which you'll see in the slides, but we hope to show you also what's going on as far as the census. We have a budget crunch. We are likely to see one, see it extend itself. But what we don't want is that for 10 years to be at the bottom of the pile of how much money is being, coming into our city. So the estimate right now is about $1,400 per person comes in our direction for every person that's counted. I am hopefully now showing you, actually, can you verify? You see a map, Mayor Marlin?
No. Do you want to advance your slide?
Actually, I'm going to switch to what I'm sharing because it, it happens. So the census has gotten really good at showing us what's going on. Do you see a map now?
Yes, yes.
What you're seeing now is Champaign County. The color scale, as you see, goes from very dark brown to very dark green on the far side, so much so that it's, it's almost black. But what, in the county, as you can see from afar, you have a census track on the very bottom right that's, that's counting at 75, what is it? 76%, 77 by now. As we zoom in though, to Urbana, we start seeing that our numbers, well, we'll come back to that. We'll zoom in. The color changes as we get closer to Urbana or in Urbana. There are some census tracks that are doing quite well. National average is about, is, is in the 50s. And so Champaign County is about right, right there. The Illinois is going on to about, what are we, eighth in the nation right now? But what worries us most is the following. Let me see if I can share now the spreadsheet that we've been using, the track. You might be seeing it already. So we've been looking at trying to figure out where the hard to count were, where the immigrants were. And then as the more we, we started spending time on and so we are now
Hey Ricardo, we've lost the PowerPoint for a minute.
Okay. Is that better?
Not seeing it yet.
The host muted me for some reason, so he's trying to get there. And I no longer see, okay, I see a share screen now, so maybe that's why he did it.
Yeah, we couldn't hear you either. It was a lot of static.
Okay, something happened. I'm going to reshare and I'm going to come back to the PowerPoint because the other slides might be, the other screens. Are we seeing now back to the slides?
You're on your cover slide. Yes.
Thank you. So just for some context then, there's a lot going on. It's being measured. We are here to, to show you some of those specific, was mostly to tell you that they are available and our group has been keeping track of them so that you can keep on doing Wendy within the clerk's office. But other people in the city have been doing a wonderful job of putting outreach out. But we still have quite a number of households that has not been counted. I don't need to tell you that the last time there had to be a recount essentially and we spent lots of money. Anything that can be done now will save us from having to patch it up later. As you can tell then, eventually, so self-response means that people have already answered in one way or the other, usually online. The postcards for our area started going out this week as a reminder. And then whoever doesn't answer in the next couple of weeks, then they'll start sending the people out. COVID and all is what they've announced. So in August, they start sending people out. But we don't want to start at 63%. We ought to be 80% by the time they send people out because it's very hard and especially during this time. You can see that for this area, then $62 million would be allocated per year to our area. Every person we don't count is 10 years of losing. In this case, $23 million that have not been accounted for yet. There, the numbers will go up once they start bringing people in and knocking on doors. But the best way to get there is to do self-response, online, by phone. They have wonderful language options, especially by phone. So the bottom line for us, I realize that the numbers, that how important, how time is for your other very important business. We want to let you know that for each one of your wards, we can produce the information, the colors, we can walk you through so that you can see who is in most need of counting. Some of your wards are hard to count by definition of the last census. A percentage of people were not counted. But I, I guess the, the, the push for us is to let you know there are plenty of options to get help. We have a team that will go out and post signs in your ward. We have, there's a competition between cities. If you want to challenge somebody else, the, the toolkit is, is well laid out. And so I'm going to not, I'm, I'm just going to leave it open for questions if you have anything else. But I can't tell you how important it is for us, for you, but especially our city right now could use the extra push because we have a couple of months and then it just starts winding down. And the census announcements and everything else, they start slowing down. And we'll just have to call it quits and hopefully not be in trouble.
We have time for a couple of questions from council. Do any council members have questions? Charisse, are you raising your hand?
Yeah. Basically, it's not so much a question, but, but something I'd like to add in addition to what Ricardo was saying. Because I've, I've been working, well, as much as I possibly can in my ward because my ward has some of the lowest numbers regarding self-response. And I've put out signs, I've put doorknob stuff on doorknobs, I've given out bags. I've gone to Wendy and gotten all kinds of, of, of stuff to, you know, I've got the little census books for kids. So I've given, I've passed out some of those as well. But the other thing, you know, when we talk about what's, what gets missed as well, something out, because I've also gone online. Carol Ammons gave me a, I went to a webinar just last week and checked and did that. And one of the things that she, she and I were discussing too is the simple fact that, you know, as much as I've been pushing for grocery store to be on the, the north end here, one of the reasons why we can't get developers or grocery store developers is because the count is low. And so they, because that's what they look at. They, she, you know, she was telling me, they look at the count. And they will determine based on what the census numbers are as to whether or not a particular neighborhood or area can, will be able to sustain that type of business. And so I just, I would really like more, actually more stuff going out. If Ricardo, if you can, you know, get your team to do that, just more stuff going out as much as possible.
We should. And as you know, we, we, back when we first contacted you, three, four months back, you have in your, in one of your tracks is the apartments, the one apartments there on, on Lincoln Avenue.
One north and one south.
That's right. Of course, because most of the students are gone, they weren't counted. But we tried to get on their Facebook page to, to highlight that they can push out information. So business owners, if you approach them with your representation, they're likely to listen to you. If everybody starts putting it on their Facebook page, we, we have our own Facebook page for the cities. But really, it is that one-to-one contact with those owners that they have access to people. We unfortunately are all bound by, by the distancing and whatever else. But people have to go out and this is a time to, to do the outreach before it gets too late.
Well, and I went to, and I went to one north and, and put stuff on doorknobs and handed out the little reusable bags and all that. I haven't been able to go to one south. But I, and I think one south may be more, may actually be more occupied than one north.
So we have hand tags for the doors or for cars. We've been trying to figure out if we put them on cars, they might get used more, seen more. We don't know how many apartments are, are empty. But I, I would say that there are multiple ways to still, we'll still work with you, Charisse, to, to get more people counted. It is so important that many people of the group are willing to go do a blitz of particular areas. So maybe we can schedule one for you.
Oh, and I'm sorry, and I think I got it confused. I think one south is, I think one, one north is more occupied than one south. I said the opposite earlier, but, because I see more cars and everything parked in that, that's the, that's right off of Lincoln and Bradley. The one north is, and I think one south is next to the firehouse, the closer to the firehouse. And I went to, we went to, I went to one south and passed out stuff. I haven't been able to go to one north. And I think it, and, and there's another apartment, series of apartment buildings over there as well, even next door to one north. So
Yeah, it's, it's important to reach as many as you can. Each person $1,400 for, for the county agencies and cities. And one way or another, it's spending money.
Yes, it is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ricardo. Mary Alice, you had one question?
I do have a really quick question. First, Ricardo, thank you so much for all the hard work that you've been doing to help with the, with gathering the count.
The group.
I'm, I'm wondering if there is a, a good message that can be sent to landlords in terms of giving information to their tenants who may have been gone during that April 15th in terms of where they're supposed to be counted, because I think that there's a lot of people who left town in April because the university closed. I'm, I'm just thinking through, is there an easy, like, quick thing that can be sent to landlords in our area?
We do have messaging that's been put out. We have the hand tags that we could do. But, you know, in, in the, in the back and forth, students got lost because of, you know, April 1 was the date and it continues to be the date. Wherever they were living on April 1 is the right message. I will send you an email with a couple of paragraphs. And if you guys have a need, there, there are money still to print and put out. If you're doing YouTube and, and Facebook, the ads have been coming up. Monies came from state level especially, but from, from other grant, granting institutions. And we've been trying to generate, hire the people. There is manpower in a couple of places that, that is doing it. The rest of us are volunteering because we value this. But the immigrant agencies, Refugee Center, the Welcome Center, just, you know, the county, CR, sorry.
RPC. We've also been working with the university through, for the Residence Hall Counts and that sort of thing as well.
Yeah, they, they sent their counts last month, which was nice. But, you know, at this point, they, they needed to send it earlier so we could see the numbers. So in any case, it's looking good.
Okay.
University is looking better.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
One more thing.
One more thing, yes.
Ricardo, the other thing I wanted to, I did want to ask you though. Is there some kind of confusion with the message considering like the national message being regarding the count of going after undocumented work, undocumented immigrants and so forth? Keeping people from filling out the census. I think, I think it needs to be, I think the message regarding that need, that needs to be sent that this is not information that the government can
So all the presidents men have been working hard to both exclude people from the census, immigrants from the census. And more recently, the president signed his executive order to system, systematically exclude them through other databases because they failed at, 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 at a question at the census that would ask for citizenship. Our messaging, that's where we started, was with immigrants, refugees. And so I think locally, we've got that covered as much as we can in that we've got several people placed in the community, the associations sending it out. I would say the gap is that there are many ministers that could still, they have both ethnic and, and other non-US nationals that could be told. And so if you have ministers in your wards, that would be a great place to, to make sure that that message is true. Everyone needs to be counted, kids, immigrants, people in jail, people all around. Every person counts for that $1,400.
Yeah, that we need to, I think that's a message that really needs to be pushed with our immigrant population. Because I think people are, are, there's a lot of fear already with the pandemic. And I think that this just does not help. When you have the, the President of the United States also push forward another message of fear regarding how, how, how the count goes in this country.
I'm with you, Charisse. He's, he's made a mess of things, but in this one, we've got to win. Everybody needs to be I'm with you, Charisse. He's made a mess of things, but in this one, we've got to win. Everybody needs to be counted.
It is very important.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move on to public input. If you'd like to speak to the council, please use the raise hand button. We'll start with Jennifer Straub.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I'm here tonight to speak in support of Julie Lott's appointment for county board council, or I'm sorry, county board. Let's be, to Urbana City Council to fill, oh, you put that up, and now I can't see what I was writing. Okay, here we go. To fill the recently vacated seat for Ward 2. I've known Julie as the president of the Unitarian Universal Church of Urbana-Champaign, where she served with efficiency and humility. I've also had the pleasure of working with her to organize a back-to-school event for families experiencing poverty in our community, where students and their families could get lunch, school supplies, and a fresh haircut in preparation for the school year. Julie showed up with professionalism, flexibility, and an open mind. Even during this time of COVID, Julie is bringing our community together. Her weekly online trivia nights have raised over $7,000 for a dozen local organizations. In short, Julie is an ideal candidate for local government, someone who will listen and consider before she leads, who will hold our community to high standards in issues of social justice, and who is interested in serving the greater good of Urbana residents. We will all benefit from productive change.
Thank you. Next up is Juan.
Hello, council.
Hello, Juan. Can you please state your first and last name for the record?
Juan Diaz. I have a question regarding, so my favorite actor per se is Adam Sandler, right? And I would like to propose a statue building in his honor in Times Square, New York.
Okay.
Okay.
In addition to that, I have a question for Ricardo, if he's still here.
He's not available to take questions at the moment, right now.
Oh my God.
So this is your public input for the council.
Okay, fine. I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you wanted to email me, I could get you some contact information for him. Next up, Chad Boswick.
Hey, city council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, what up, council? Thanks so much for working so hard on the COVID-19 virus. But I think something that could get missed is how this affects people mentally. And I think one way we could do to increase this is to vote me for class president of Illinois University. I'll put beers in the drinking fountains and cameras in the girls locker room, baby. Let's go.
Thank you, Chad. Next up is Mike Thiessen.
Hello, council. Hello, mayor. I had written an email earlier. I'm with Black Hawk Restaurant Group. My business is at 114 North Vine in the Urbana Crossing. And I was just hoping that the, I was just hoping that the council would consider adding a sixth video gaming machine to those that qualify and have a liquor license valid with both the city of Urbana and the state of Illinois. I know there are several of my other colleagues that are on the call today from Lucky Lounge, Bunny's Tavern. I think the BFW 630 is on, I think represented from Ruby's, from Dottie's, from Hot Spots, and from Flingo Slots. We've seen that in other markets, that six video gaming terminal will increase revenue for all parties up to 20%. So that's a benefit obviously to the location, but also to the state of Illinois and the local municipalities. And while everybody is crying poor, all cry poor as well. As you know, within the hospitality industry, we were shut down for 14 weeks, which many of us realized not one dime of revenue. But unfortunately, our landlords and comm ed and our gas company and our insurance company still expected their payment. So while this would help, it would appreciate, it would help us also dig out a little bit of a hole. The other item that I think that would be very helpful would be, we've had two, obviously wage increases, which has shifted up our wages, both on July of last year or January of this year, and then July 1 of this year as well. As well as the state of Illinois put an additional tax on us on July 1, and then again on July 1 of 2020. So while these six machines are beneficial for the business, they'll also be beneficial, as I said, to the state and to the city of Urbana. So while I know no action will be taken today, I want to make sure that our request is in and is formal. And if there's any additional information that you need, I know Black Hawk Restaurant Group would be happy to gather things for you as well as any of the other colleagues that I think are also on this call. Clearly, they can, they can speak on behalf of themselves, but we would just like to formally ask that you do consider that six machine in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Next up is Fiona Monroe.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good evening, city council, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Fiona Monroe and I am a resident of Ward 7. I was disappointed to have to leave last week's city council meeting early as I wanted to be present for the discussion on the future of policing in Urbana. So I am glad to see that that agenda item has been moved to the beginning of this week's meeting. In part, I'm interested to hear the discussion because I'm a little confused as to why a discussion is necessary. For the past several weeks, the vast majority of comments from the public, your constituency, have asked you to undertake specific actions to combat the brutality of the Urbana Police Department that we saw so blatantly displayed on April 10. I don't pretend to have insight into the opinions of every resident of Urbana, but as someone concerned with the interests of my fellow citizens, I make an effort to listen to what others express, which seems to be more than you have been doing. We asked you not to reinstate Chief Seraphin, giving the very overdue need to reexamine his department's behavior, and you ignored us. We have been asking you to call on State Attorney Julia Reitz to drop the charges against the protesters arrested on May 31 and against Aliyah Lewis, and you have yet to do any such thing. I'd like to add my voice to those calling on you to publicly demand, both as individuals and as a political body, that Julia Reitz drop these charges. And I'd further like to ask that you make an unequivocal and public commitment to defunding and disempowering the UPD. These actions would only go a very little way to actually producing justice for Ms. Lewis and the arrested protesters, but would at least indicate that you are interested in listening to your constituents. At the end of last week's meeting and discussion about the proposed bicycle wayfinding plan, council member Roberts brought up the question of this council's priorities. He pointed out that the council approves plenty of creative and well-intentioned development plans, but does not always follow through. I would agree that this council has an issue with priorities, namely that your priorities do not seem to align with the priorities of your constituency. Last week's discussion about FOIA fees brought this problem into clearer focus. I think that council member Miller hit the nail on the head when he noted that if FOIA fees for voluminous requests and recurrent requesters are not an important source of revenue for the city, they seem merely punitive. I agree with council member Miller and fail to see why Urbana residents need to pay exorbitant fees to access publicly available information. It's also notable that the information in question, especially in terms of recent requests, has to do with the actions of the police. Your recalcitrance to remove obstacles to improving public awareness of police actions appears to me to indicate your support for the brutality enacted by the Urbana Police and your disdain for the actual desires of the constituency you claim to represent. I hope to hear differently in tonight's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ben Jocelyn.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
So hello again, and I thank you again for all your time and service to the city of Urbana. I just want to sort of re-bring up our sort of continued pressure to do all the things that have yet to be accomplished regarding defunding and disempowering the police as well as moving towards community support. I want to point out very quickly that at the conversation about the role of police in Urbana-Champaign, there are repeated calls and questions from members of sort of not the power, but of the sort of professors around the history of police and their role in society, who asked questions to the effect of, are there any good examples of when increased policing has ever solved gun violence? Or these things that we've used to have substantial increases in police in Urbana recently? And there was no ready answer. There are no good studies that show that policing actually decreases violence or any of the problems we continue to be faced with, and that in and of itself makes it a very good reason to try something else. It was also brought up by Diane Marlin once again, that the $1.5 million increase for the cops last year was not in fact an increase, but in fact in a pension adjustment. And I don't really care what $1.5 extra million was spent on within the police budget. If you're getting an extra $1.5 million, it is in fact an increase. That amount can be cut. If you choose to defund and disempower the police, there's no two ways around that. Just because the people who you're talking to believe in labor rights and that people should be treated fairly and say that it's for the pensions and not the guns that they use, we all know how budgets work. And that if you claim that the budget is increased for that reason, but everything else continues to be funding at the same level, instead of choosing to have your pensions funded better, and that meaning that you have less staffing, less equipment, et cetera, you are in fact allowing for a growth in police force by increasing the pension, instead of just having that come out of their budget. So police has gone up 17% over the three years that all of you have been in power. That is the wrong answer. Parking enforcement's going up by like 30% this year. That's gross. Whereas the things that we need for people are not going. At the thing, Diane Marlin also said that she's not been given a roadmap to how this looks better. But I think that that's a red herring and that there's been no effort to reach out to the people who continue to give these ideas. The three minutes that we each get at the beginning of these meetings is not enough time to give you a plan and you are all paid to lead the way. As the mayor and as the city council, you're not paid to like have us create plans for you, though it would be great if you would use your resources and your vision to listen to us and lead us in the way to the future. So please give us the chance to do that. It would be great if we got five minutes again. Doesn't seem like there's more than 20 people. And so it'd be great if we had more time to say our piece. I also think that the roadmap piece doesn't matter as you talk or like, we continue to ask for Aliyah Lewis to be freed. It'd be wonderful if you just had a statement. I don't know if you need something that says like, whereas the actions of the Urbana Police used excessive force and were possibly and almost certainly racist in nature, whereas this has been the history of policing forever, we, the city council of Urbana, votes. Or would like.
Ben, your time is up. Thank you.
Drop the charges.
Thank you. Tracy Chan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Tracy Chan, resident of Urbana. In the past few months, the public has called for transparency and accountability in the Urbana government and Urbana Police Department. I hope Mayor Marlin will make the selection process for the city council Ward 2 seat as transparent as possible. This is especially so following the questionable appointment of Parkland Chief of Police William Colbrook as Dean Hazen's replacement for Ward 6. Even before the Ward 6 seat application was open to the public, resigning council member Dean Hazen emailed Mayor Marlin stating his intention to transfer his seat to Colbrook. In the email, Hazen says that his good friend, Bill Colbrook, wants the seat. Hazen says that he has discussed this with Mike Madigan and concluded that it would be best to let Colbrook take the seat now. Hazen writes that he appreciates Marlin's cooperation in transferring his elected seat to Colbrook and offers his support behind the scenes. Now, it is unclear what selection procedure or criteria Mayor Marlin used to appoint Bill Colbrook, but it is very concerning that council member Dean Hazen requested that his seat be transferred to a good friend and fellow chief of police. Dean Hazen is a retired Urbana police officer that voiced his opposition during the creation of the Urbana Civilian Police Review Board in 2007 and is currently chief of police at Richland Community College. Both Dean Hazen and Urbana Police Lieutenant Joel Sanders were listed as references for Bill Colbrook. I hope for the Ward 2 position, and more importantly, for future appointments to city council and also boards and commissions, the selection process is transparent. I suggest that the mayor and city council publicly discuss and make clear the number of applicants, the letters in support or opposition of each candidate, selection criteria, and reasons for appointment. I think it is very important for appointees to city council and boards and commissions who have demonstrated an active interest in public affairs and service related to Urbana and Champagne County. I hope appointees to these positions have a history of being well-versed in local ordinance, being involved in discussions with public entities, local social justice groups, city council members, boards and commissions, as well as demonstrated a sustained commitment to our community. To hear that appointees resigned from boards and commissions after just a short period of serving, once they realize the commitment involved seems like an error of judgment, seems like an error of judgment in the selection process. Investment and commitment to local issues is of utmost importance. It is very, very disheartening to hear city council members come in unprepared and outright declare that they have not prepared anything beforehand, especially when addressing issues such as the beating of Aliyah Lewis, police misconduct, policing, racial disparity, and transparency. It is disheartening to see the inaction of council members who till today, I hope I'm wrong, have not stepped up to ask for Ms. Lewis's charges to be dropped. It takes time and.
Thank you. Your time is up, Ms. Chan. Next up is John Hayes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, Mayor Marlin, city council. First, I'll just keep saying it till it happens. I urge you to call on Julia Reitz and drop all the charges against Aliyah Lewis and the 27 protesters. This week, I want to focus on the housing crisis that is coming our way. We are facing severe economic hardships. A Forbes article cites that nationally, 17 million people are unemployed. As of April this year, Champagne and Urbana had an unemployment rate of 10.4%. And of course, this doesn't account for the many people that have kept jobs but have sustained substantial decreases to their income. All this is simply to say that far too many people are in a situation that makes paying rent or the mortgages on their own homes impossible. What can we do to proactively prevent this? The impending eviction crisis ties into our ongoing conversation on policing. Homeless populations become entangled in a cycle of crime for many reasons. One, it's well documented that shelterless people will sometimes commit minor crimes for the purpose of getting into jail, simply to get basic shelter. Second, being homeless leads to severe scrutiny from the public, which can lead to overpolicing. Getting out of a cycle of criminality is a Herculean task for people that have practically no resources. I'm not sure the police can play any role besides arresting and re-arresting a homeless population that's threatening to grow in the coming months. The function of police in this regard seems to be an utter waste of the city budget. The police have no active role to play in decreasing homelessness. And in fact, through the enforcement of evictions and overpolicing that always skews in favor of property owners against the dispossess, they will have an active role in increasing homelessness. Let's not wait for action from the state or federal level to help the housing situation. We have to take actions soon at our own local level. Cancel rents, stop utility shut-offs, and let's help people, not police. Longer term, we can look at providing public housing, which would be cheaper than the financial costs of continually processing the houseless population through the sham of a criminal justice system. Some of the money for this can absolutely be reallocated from our bloated police budget towards housing needs. Public housing would be proactive. Police can only be reactive. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Melissa Sheplin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Melissa Sheplin and I am an Urbana resident. Hi, um, good evening. My name is Melissa Sheplin and I am an Urbana resident. Um, I am here this evening to uh, speak in support of the appointment of Julie Lautz to represent Ward Two on the Urbana City Council. Um, I grew up in Urbana, um, and left for 20 years and came back. Um, and love my hometown very much and it's it was during my um, return to the city that I met Julie. Um, just out and about in downtown Urbana. Honestly, every every time I went to downtown Urbana, which was quite frequently, I would see Julie um, there. She lives very close, of course, living in Ward Two. Um, and she um, is very much a supporter of the downtown business district and um, was very much um, a presence at Urbana First Fridays when that was going on. Um, and um, supporting other community events that that would take place there. Um, I later got have got to know Julie more personally, um, when I joined the Unitarian Church, um, which happened, I happened to join during her tenure as chairwoman of the church. Um, and during that time, she oversaw increasing accessibility to the church um, for um, people with disabilities and also securing alternative energy sources for the church. Her experience as chairwoman of the board gave her experience in coalition building, strategic planning, budgeting, consensus building and transparency governance. Um, when Julie first came to Urbana, she came here as a graduate student, living on a grad student budget with uh, two children in the Urbana Public Schools. Um, her daughter is still, her son graduated and her daughter is um, at the high school. And um, as has been mentioned, this year during COVID, she has channeled her energy into um, creating a free pantry outside her home. Um, which is frequently um, visited, um, demonstrating the need that many people are having right now. And she also has been running um, CU Lockdown Trivia, an online trivia game um, on Friday nights for the past um, maybe four months. Um, which often there's over 100 people in attendance, bringing many people a sense of community that we don't have right now. Um, but she has always dedicated um, the beginning of the trivia night to highlighting a local nonprofit organization. Um, inviting people to come and speak about it and then um, encouraging donations. Um, and again, this, she knows the exact amount, um, as it's been reported to her, but this has actually raised thousands of dollars for local nonprofits. Julie is a creative pop problem solver. She's a collaborative, approachable, intelligent and thoughtful. She's an advocate for social justice issues. I strongly support her appointment to the Urbana City Council and the council and residents of Urbana would benefit greatly from Julie Lautz's service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Austin Hoffman.
Hello.
Hello, Austin.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Austin Hoffman. I'm an Urbana resident in Ward Five. Uh, last Thursday evening, I watched the panel on the role of policing in Champaign-Urbana, which Mayor Marlin participated in. Uh, during the panel, Mayor Marlin, Mayor Finan of Champaign, Champaign Police Chief Cobb and Champaign County Sheriff Clearman uh, mentioned numerous times that police are asked to do too much in our society. Uh, Mayor Marlin specifically said she was quote, "All for reallocating funds toward other services that address our community's social problems." Of course, by now, the citizens of Urbana know all too well that these words do not align with their actions. You and the majority of this council let the opportunity to reallocate those funds pass you by during the budget hearings last month. When the topic of rising gun violence, as Ben Jocelyn uh, mentioned, was raised, um, Chief Cobb and Mayor Marlin took that red meat in an attempt to display the need for police in our society. Yet, when an audience member asked if there was any hard evidence of larger police budgets being correlated with lower rates of gun violence, none of you had anything to say. So here is the circularity or tautology of your logic. You say that police do too much in our society and occupy roles that social workers and mental health professionals would be better equipped for. We agree with you. We say that we have to defund the police in order to provide the resources so that this transition can happen and the needs of our community can actually be addressed. That you refuse to do so and default to funneling ever more money to the UPD and proposing the same solutions which do not work. We are saying it's time to try something different, to not involve the police in our efforts to resolve violence, interpersonal conflict, addiction, homelessness, et cetera. You are posing the exact same solutions to our problems and in the process, people are brutalized, incarcerated or murdered. Several members of this council have suggested that calls to defund or God forbid abolish the police are radical, unrealistic, irrational, foolish, uh, et cetera. But mounting evidence shows that the contrary is actually the case and last Thursday's panel is just one example of you being exposed for what you are. You are in fact the irrational, irresponsible, unrealistic and unpragmatic ones. Police in prisons may make some people feel safer, mostly the white and wealthy, but they do not do so in the long run. They actually are the major barriers to other kinds of safety we are proposing. With all the financial resources going to policing, there's less opportunity for people most affected by crime and poverty to get the resources uh, to deal with those issues where they live. Police do not actually enforce the law and are not accountable to it. They handle the law after the fact to justify the way that they decided to restore order. From a policing perspective, they do not deal with the law. They deal with threats. In theory, Kiwan Carrington and Richie Turner had rights under the law. That did not stop Champaign Police from murdering them. Ali Lewis had rights under the law, but UPD officers saw her as a threat. That the law allowed them to brutalize her and publicly gaslight her. If you care about racial justice the way you say you do, you will do all you can to drop the charges against Ali Lewis and the 27 protester to rest on May to uh, May 31st at Marketplace Mall. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, Alex Fournier.
Sup, city council. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, my name's Alex Fournier.
Thank you.
Okay, sup, city council. How's it going? Thanks for being chill as hell and let me speak. You guys are the heroes of our city. Um, so I'm a little nervous during public speaking situations, so please be chill if I'm slow or stutter. You, I stand with the city council. Um, I'm here to talk about a cause I'm very invested and passionate about. I think we should add a statue of Paul Walker, a true American hero from our beloved city of Urbana, Chicago. We are extremely mentally scarred by this horrible coronavirus and to boost the city's morale and I think, you know, to bridge the tension of recent, you know, racial violence and police brutality, I think we need to um, add a city uh, statue of Paul Walker to Meadowbrook Park. This will boost everyone's morale in Urbana, Illinois and can even boost our economy as a tourist attraction. Also, after coronavirus, we should make uh, alcohol free on weekends at the Peewalk statue. We should add a history of spread exhibit in the Spurlock Museum as well, but that's a different cause, sorry. Um, I also believe we should get a free bus to all the French Flint Tropics games on 10 Cent Beer Night. 10 Cent Beer Night is where legends are made. I actually bet my best friend and third boyfriend in my previous marriage, Micro Penis, on 10 Cent Beer Night.
I think we'll move on to the next speaker. Um, next up is Giovanna.
Okay, are we good?
Good. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Giovanna DiBenedetto. I am a um, resident and community leader in Ward Seven um, and the Silverwood Community. Um, did you guys get, I don't know if you can post them, the pictures that I sent?
We we did receive the pictures, but we can't post them. I don't have them.
No, that's fine. So um, what I'd like to address tonight is, as I'm sure many people are aware, um, there was a fatal shooting and stabbing um, last night um, or early evening in the Silverwood Community. Um, what many of you may not realize is that the building that this happened at um, is directly behind my building. The pictures that I sent, and you'll see pictures in the newspaper, but um, for the record, the ones that I sent were the ones that I took with my children. Because it's 7:30 in the morning, that's what we woke up to. And that is a scene that although by 7:30, the um, bodies were long gone, crowds were gone, but what was up was police tape and police officers and tons of police cars. And I, like many other residents, had little children wondering if they were safe. And that's just something it's something that happens everywhere now. But in Silverwood, we're tired of it. Um, the building that this happened with, there has been the police have responded to many calls over the last several months. Several of us were concerned. Residents in the community, as we talked, they not only felt helpless over the last few months, but they were and are helpless to do anything about this. There's been a movement to defund the police, that this would solve the problem of violence in our community. And in reality, that's not what my neighbors are saying. What they are saying is, when is this gonna stop? I have to move because it's too dangerous. Why was this allowed to happen? Who's looking out for us? And who really cares about us? And that's the entire community of Silverwood, all the income levels. Defunding the police, they feel, and I feel, and either solves or answers any of these questions. What the community believes will help and is asking for going for it and we will work hand in hand to help make this happen is number one, we would like more invite, more involvement from our city councilmen in Silverwood initiatives and activities. Number two, we would like with the city to look into how we can handle or how can we hold landlords accountable by looking at other cities and how they've handled these situations. And then also lastly, how can we help the landlords enforce some of the current laws that are there to help them, but actually in the end kind of help keep them from keeping residents safe? None of us should ever wake up to the scenes that you will see in the paper and on the news. Our priorities should not be about defunding and taking things away from the police. But instead, we need to all work together as a community. We need to show each other that we care. Because personally, I can tell you, I don't know if any of you have woken up to that scene, but I've done it twice since I've lived here now. And I'm tired of it. And I'm tired of watching people die over fights, over stupid things. And my neighbors are tired of it. When my kids and kids tonight at 6 o'clock tonight should have been playing, they will hold up inside because they're scared. It's, I'm I'm almost done, but I'm tired of hearing about, you know, i- it's all one problem. We have to start together. Silverwood is committed as a whole, all areas. Suna, the the at least one or two, one landlord over here. Um, we're committed to figuring this out. And we are asking for the city's support. We will work with you. We will do the footwork. But I ask also that aside from our city staff to all the um, residents of Urbana that are listening. I ask you, do you want to wake up to what you saw in the news? If that is your community, if you don't live in some of these neighborhoods like that, how would you feel? Because I had to reassure my seven-year-old, my four-year-old this morning that they were safe and they're used to this neighborhood. But they were scared. And they were scared for their friends that live over in that building. Silverwood deserves better, but more importantly, I truly believe Urbana deserves better and we can do better. And we look forward to working with the city to solve this problem and with the landlords. And um, and getting this done. And making our communities, even the tougher communities, making them what they can be, can be. Lastly, a prime example of that, if you saw the news tonight, the gentleman on there. Um, he's one of my good friends. He's lived here for a long time. He was so proud that they asked him to interview him. And he hit some of it on the head. People like him matter. And it's time we acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you, Giovanna. Next up is Megan McDonald.
All right. Dear Mayor Marlin and the city council, I'm Megan McDonald. I'm from Ward Five. Mayor Marlin, you need to stop being selective about who you interrupt. If I start crying about Ali Lewis, will you listen? I didn't want to show up today, but as a friend said to me, it is exhausting in a way that is convenient for the establishment. That's you, the establishment. You would benefit and most likely sigh in relief from our absence. Mayor Marlin has actively silenced public input in the past. In the past month, Marlin has interrupted three women when they had the floor, one being Naomi Pack from Thursday's panel. They are all more invested in anti-racism work than she. I don't know why it takes you so long to interrupt trolls. In case anyone listening tonight didn't get a chance to listen to this past Thursday's panel held by W I L L, I highly suggest you go online and find it. While the featured community members showed way more preparedness, compassion and understanding for why police should be defunded and ultimately abolished, as expected, I was still ultimately embarrassed by and for the people in power. The sheriff and Urbana Mayor Marlin made sure to mention why they need grace and time to understand, citing growing up in all-white towns, always believing the police were there to help, personal positive experiences, et cetera. Chief Seraphin from Urbana didn't even attend. I'm sure Marlin didn't push him on that, even though she's testified for his character multiple times.
Excuse me, Megan. Megan, I am going to
No, you don't get to interrupt me.
Yes, I do. I'm going to interrupt you and explain that the date of that panel had been changed four times. Chief Seraphin had a family vacation planned many months ago and that's why he wasn't there.
My time?
I will reimburse your time.
Okay, I'm gonna continue then. I want to mention that a lot of us have the same origin story, myself included. While we will never be done learning and unlearning, mu- most people, at least the people that are showing up from the community, have made the time and effort to learn about the abolish the police movement, have listened to and witnessed with our own eyes and ears how cops get away with murder again and again, year after year. Why hasn't the council? I know why, because doing this research and work would be directly at odds with the people that protect and endorse Mayor Marlin, the Urbana Fraternal Order of Police. Another few things to note about Thursday's panel is Mayor Marlin said, and I quote, that she is all for reallocating funds and that the police face consequences and would be the first to say they'd share the responsibility of the issue society has failed to address. I would like everyone to take a second to internalize those statements. Are you going to publicize that on Thursday, no one in power had a response when the point was brought up that despite the millions of dollars put into the police budget over the last 10 to 20 years, gun violence has gone up? Giovanna, I'm sorry that happened to people in your neighborhood, but police do not stop gun violence. So what's the excuse for officers being assigned assault rifles at jobs they aren't qualified for? When are you going to cut the police budget and invest in real solutions into real people's lives and not continuously approve budget increases for a militant selective group? On another note, today is Ali Lewis's 22nd birthday. Push Julia Reitz to drop the charges against Ms. Lewis. You believe the police served the community on April 10th? That video enraged us and you continue to disgrace Urbana and what it should stand for, for peace, for sanctuary. And that includes for young people, protection from a severely violent, life-threatening mass incarceration system. She's 22 years old, facing 12 to 24 years in prison. What are you going to do? Are you going to help her? What are you going to do about the 27 protesters arrested on May 31st? Why do you talk more about street name changes, sidewalks, about COVID-19 more than racism? This is killing people. It has been killing people. Next week will be August. We expect budget amendments to begin now. Stop telling us to wait something. Also, appointing Chris Hansen to Ward Two would be a welcomed breath of fresh air to this stagnant council. Thank you.
Next up is Charlotte G.
Hi, sorry. Hi, uh, my name is Charlotte G. Um, I'm a resident of Urbana. Um, I've spoken at meetings before. Have I also watched the W I L L uh, conference uh, or panel uh, last Thursday? And one thing that greatly concerned me was the sheer amount of the sheer dismissal from law enforcement and city leadership towards uh, anti-racist solutions. One thing of note was the fervent defense caused from the um, chiefs of police and the, or the law enforcement um, voices towards SROs. Multiple people on the council or multiple people on that um, committee, it was a multiple speakers discussed the danger of SROs and the fact that there is no statistical evidence or data that supports the validity of SROs as reduce, making situations better in schools. So particularly, there's also, the, the people post SROs were gave consistent and multiple sources that SROs actually do not help and are a waste of funds. Particularly in this case, in Urbana, the SROs are roughly estimated to cost around $300,000, which while we're talking about defunding the police, we're talking about sort of taking away some of the police duties and separating it between different services. That $300,000 could afford maybe five or six counselors for schools, which could provide a far greater service to the communities that are being endangered by police violence. So I would like the Urbana City Council and leadership to, I urge you to remove the SROs from Urbana schools, or at least roll back the increased police presence that was put, that was signed early, I'll say in late last year. Additionally, it is necessary to drop the charges against Aliyah Lewis. We've all seen the videos. We've talked about it many times. It, this has to stop. Aliyah Lewis and the protesters did nothing wrong and are being held captive for just being present when the police decided to start a fight. But yeah, drop the charges against Aliyah Lewis and the protesters at the Marketplace Mall. No more SROs in Urbana schools. Yeah, please support stronger anti-racist measures and listen to the community, not just the police chief. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Christopher Hanson.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, I just wanted to comment on some of the FOIA discussion that we had at last week's city council meeting. A few, few errors to correct. First of all, it was mentioned that the city only has two recurrent requesters. That is not true, and I think James Simon knows that's not true. You have made that determination for other people. And also, it was claimed that charges were only being charged to recurrent requesters, and that is also not true. You guys are, seem to be, I don't have 100% of the evidence, but you seem to be charging people specifically for records relevant to the police department. Regarding, it seems like what's happening is in the city, maybe, my best understanding is that it seems like we have city staff who have veto power and are essentially able to either undo or create their own legislation by adopting practices that nearly let them do whatever they want. And I think Jared Miller might be the only person kind of asking the right question, which is, is what the city doing, or is what the, what city staff are doing, does that represent the values of the city of Urbana? And last week, our city administrator Carol Mitten claimed that charging residents hundreds of dollars for public records is equitable to charging businesses for liquor licenses. And I think it was such a terrible analogy, and such an off-putting analogy, that Jared Miller hardly knew how to respond to that statement. The proper response is that when residents requesting public records is most similar to residents seeking books at the public library. And that is not something for which we assess massive fees. Our city values indicate that charging those fees would not be right. And our city values indicate that we do not publicly demonize someone who endeavors to read a lot of books. And this is what you're doing to people who are, who are requesting public records, and it's wrong. And this is the kind of thing that I'm referring to when I talk about having frank and honest conversations. The FOIA presentation last week was not frank and honest by the city staff. The way things have been going is that the public has presented some kind of twisted version of the truth and urged to ignorantly accept it. And the problem is that Urbana residents aren't dumb. We're smart, and we are therefore offended by a dishonest presentation. And we keep doing this, and we have this nasty feedback mechanism that doesn't seem to do anything but chisel away at any level of trust that might exist between our residents and our government. And this is what I want to see stopped, because we can do much better than that. We're better than that. It doesn't align with our values to be dishonest. And, and trust is, trust matters. It really matters. And we will see the Ferguson effect in Urbana, and crime will go up, and we will have more shootings. And if we don't get things back on track, it's going to be nothing but bad. And that's why it's important to have frank and honest discussions. Please stop misrepresenting the facts. Thank you.
Sarah Nixon.
My name is Sarah Nixon. I'm a resident of Urbana, and I have three comments. First, I join the community in calling on the mayor and the city council to follow the most rigorous and impeccable transparency in its appointment process for the vacant city council position. The residents of the city of Urbana deserve no less than complete transparency and accountability from their government and their city council, and full participation in this appointment process. Secondly, I want to commend, commend council member Jared Miller for raising questions and concerns at last week's city council committee of the whole meeting about how the city is handling Freedom of Information Act requests from its residents. Urbana needs to see Mr. Miller's level of engagement and concern for transparency from all of its city government members. And I want to register concern and disappointment in response to a position taken by council member Hersi at that meeting, who expressed a disdainful and dismissive posture with regard to FOIA requesters who dig and dig again for data and information, suggesting that they are just out to dig up dirt on a city employee or elected official. Now, I think that this point bears revisiting. If any such dirt, quote-unquote, indeed exists, the city, its government, or the government, the city government, its employees, and its FOIA officers should be welcoming any opportunity to pick up a shovel and dig with the community to locate and excavate and eliminate any such dirt. The city should not hide corruption. And no council member should be supporting or participating in a culture of cover-up, in a culture that obstructs the public's access to truth and to the documentation that reveals or confirms that truth. And my third appeal to the mayor and the council is that in continuing to stand by passively as the wrongful prosecution of Aliyah Lewis continues, city leadership continues to fail, to fall short of its promises to address police brutality, systemic racism, misconduct, and cover-up in its police force. And this is nothing short of shameful. The city leadership can do better and must do better. Your integrity depends on it. The city must advocate, as are its constituents, for the wrongful charges against Aliyah Lewis to be dropped.
Thank you. Alan Axelrod.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
All right. Would you mind putting the timer up, please? Thank you. Thank you very much. So, good evening, Urbana City Council. First thing I wanted to note is that there's not a monopoly on who has been victimized by violence, or who has neighbors who have been victimized by violence. It is absolutely ignorant for to use the incident of one's community to advocate further funding a punitive mechanism as opposed to a preventive mechanism preventing crime from occurring. I have had one neighbor-
Alan, there's a lot of reverb in your, in your audio. Let's go to the next person, and we'll come back to Alan. See if we can get that fixed. Drake, are you here?
I'm up. Yes, yes, I am here. Is my time yet?
Yeah, go ahead, Drake. You have three minutes.
So I just want to say that SROs in Urbana should definitely be removed from the schools. Again, someone said earlier that there's no proof, no evidence that they actually de-escalate. Police officers do not de-escalate as well either. The other night, I know this was in Champaign, but we had members out in the community that were doing better de-escalation and community oversight and community watching better than the police. The police were called for intimidation. That's why we asked for the defunding and the abolishment of the police, not because of violence in the communities that is, that is there because of the neglect and the disenfranchisement of the black and brown communities. We ask that you defund the police and reallocate those funds, but we also ask that you reallocate those funds in what we want and where we want those funds to be reallocated to. We do not ask that you allocate those funds that will benefit you. We ask that you allocate those funds in our manner, the way that we want. I've said it multiple times before here in Champaign, we're not only fighting for defunding the police and change, we're fighting for equitable power. We're fighting to change this society by any means. We ask that you remove SROs from schools, again, not only during this pandemic, but forever. Get that money and reallocate those funds and give it to the community, specifically to black and brown and marginalized communities here in Urbana. Number two, defunding the police. I see you all defunded the police. I believe $120,000 from the budget. I like to see that $120,000 again given to that community. That is only a start. That is not the finish. That is only a start. That is not the finish. We also ask that, again, we're going to always say, justice for Aliyah Lewis. Everybody's name, we say, ask for justice, again, for Aliyah Lewis and everyone else that was victims to police brutality. Again, I'm going to keep saying it and saying it and saying it because I have time. Remove the SROs from, okay, remove SROs from the schools. Again, remove SROs from the schools. Everybody that's listening, I have time left. Remove the SROs from the schools. I can't say that enough. I cannot say that any louder. I cannot say that any clearer. That is one way that you can get defunding the police, even if you are so, so stern in keeping your policing, keeping your systems, and keeping your police involved. If you remove those two SROs, SROs from the schools, we'll be sending a little bit more money that can be allocated to the community. You already, again, Urbana said $120,000, $125,000 defunding from the police. SROs, if I'm not mistaken, around $325,000. That's almost $500,000 actually to be given straight to the community. Again, remove SROs from Urbana. And again, we also would like Champaign to follow suit, but we will go and, we'll talk with them during their council meeting, so. Yes.
Thank you, Drake.
Also, Alan Axelrod's phone turned off. He is turning on his phone again, so yes, he will be speaking as well still. Thank you.
Is Alan Axelrod available? Okay, while he's getting his phone on, we did receive some email correspondence, I think in the interest of time and because we have this important discussion coming up on public safety and policing, I will let the public know that we received emails from Erin Umberger, Jen Roth, Ron Kester, Cheryl Brooks, Mike, Mike Beeson spoke, Janice Walker, Anne Marie Esposito, Jesse Cruz, Michelle Plant, Laura, Laura Jobe, Amina Payne, and Naomi Pike. These, Pike, these will be entered in their entirety into the meeting record. Is Alan Axelrod available? Okay, Alan, would you like to, if you email your comments, we will include those in the meeting record as well. Don't see any more hands up. Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to unfinished business, which is discussion, which is the future of public safety and policing in Urbana, talking about next steps. To kind of set the framework and introduce this, I appreciate the many, many comments and the inputs that we've received over the past weeks. There is no doubt interest in systemic change, both in this country and in this community, and we're committed to that work. But it's going to be work. And when people express impatience about why we didn't cut the budget, or why we don't do this or that, it's because we need to make sure we have a plan in place and one that is thoughtful and intentional, intentional and sustainable, and it's really what the entire community wants. Any systemic changes we do is going to cost more. It's not just a matter of shifting money from one department budget to the other. This is going to cost, and we need to make sure we're able to pay for that and are committed to that. There, while there's talk about disbanding police, we are going to need police to work with us. They will still need to respond to people who are in danger. They will still need to respond when crimes are being committed. But there are many, many different ways to approach public safety, and this is what we're about to do. We're about to envision public safety in this community. But I think it's very important that we include police officers in this discussion so that we can learn from their experience. They have ideas, and they are eager to participate in the discussion with the community. So Jason, I wanted to, before we kind of look ahead to the future, I just wanted to summarize what efforts are underway currently. These are the things that are being focused on really over the next two to three months. And they are consuming and taking staff time, resources, and money. So we want to, I just want to make sure people know where we are, and then we'll turn the, start the discussion on where we want to go. First of all, the independent review of the Aliyah Lewis arrest is underway. Hillard Hines has scheduled three listening sessions for tomorrow and Wednesday, and people have been invited to those. They're also reviewing the documents and videos related to the event. We've arranged for some additional community input sessions with the civilian police review board as, I call them co-conveners, but participating in that, that will be held after the Hillard Hines report to city council. So it's a way to continue the conversation and build on what we learned during these community-wide interviews. The civilian police review board is rebooting. The focus this coming Wednesday, or that will begin to be on the complaints and the appeals process. The PTI Police Training Institute Director, Mike Schlosser, will be doing use-of-force training for the CPRB members, but this would also be training or a presentation that would be very useful for city council to watch and for the community to watch, because this basically will go, give you an overview of what officers undergo now, what is the basis and for the practices and policies in the city now. And it's the baseline, where do we, that we go from here. There's also two vacancies on CPRB. We're going to be interviewing applicants this week. That the interviews will include the two co-chairs of the CPRB, as well as city staff. And at this point, the board is pledging to adhere to the language of the current ordinance. I know there's, some are desiring a different model. Right now, we have an appeals board. but that is something that can be up for discussion in a few minutes, but at this point, we have to go by the current ordinance. Next slide. I wanted to let you all know that our current human relations officer, Vasilia Clark, has announced that she's retiring as of July 31st, 2020. We've decided to restore the HRO position to a full-time position. It'll be reporting to the mayor instead of to the human resources department as it was in the past. There was always a lot of confusion about human relations and human resources, and it's really more appropriate for, to be directly reporting to, to my, to me. The, both the position and the Human Relations Commission are going to be renamed to better reflect what they actually do, which is to focus on human rights and equity in the city. So we'll, we'll be recommending a new name for that position. The Community Engagement Coordinator search is, is well underway. We had 83 completed applications. They've been screened and I believe about 24 people have been sent a questionnaire as the next step. And then from that group, the, we'll select the people that we would like to interview. So we had a great deal of interest in the position and the Community Engagement Coordinator will work very closely with the new human relations person or the replacement for that. Just to remind people that the city council passed a resolution affirming the 10 shared principles, which is sponsored by the NAACP and the Illinois Association of Police Chiefs. And we do have a workshop scheduled for September 17th, and that is hosted by the NAACP and the chiefs. And the format for that meeting is determined by those two groups. The city is not hosting, but we will help get this meeting underway. Next slide. There's going to be a presentation to city council on August 17th, when one very important area that I think we can demonstrate the opportunity to, to defund or reallocate funds and remove some of the burden from the police department is in our alternative emergency response to mental health calls for services. We do have a pilot program that's in the works and they're calling it One Door. And I think it, it will be a very good alternative to what we have now. It will better serve the needs of the community, to the family members, and it will contribute to public safety and improving public safety. There's an, there's an ongoing internal review by the police department of their policies. This is not the, the end of it, but they're starting the review and they're looking at, I know there's been concern about the policies that show up with redactions on the city website, and that's one of the things they're looking at very closely. So that review of policies, including use of force, I'm sure will be a focus of efforts in the future. And then there will be a discussion at an upcoming city council meeting on the traffic stop racial disparities. And again, there's internal work going on, recommendations that can be made to city council. So in view of, in view of everything we've been hearing over the past few weeks, it's one thing that's become very clear. Can we have the next slide, please? That is that these discussions are not going to be advanced far enough by simply doing city council meetings and committee of the whole meeting. We really need to have much more thorough, deeper and a much broader participation and dialogue about these issues if we're going to re-envision public safety and policing in Urbana. I'm recommending that, that we put together an advisory committee to the council and mayor on public saving, safety and policing, again, which gets, seeks very broad community input in a different types of venues. Some of the topics that this committee might be tasked with looking at, and that's what I'd like input on tonight, is what kind of model do you want for civilian oversight and accountability for the police department? Right now, we have an appeals-based model. If you want a different kind of model, it's going to take research and thought in terms of exactly what does that mean? How much will it cost? What is involved? There's many different policies within the Urbana Police Department that I'm sure people are interested in looking at. That could be another section of, of this committee's responsibility. There's, if you talk about defunding the police, but we're, what we're really talking about is reallocating a number of functions that the police currently do. I would call those the non-core police functions. We're going to need public safety officials to respond to times, as I said, to when people are in danger. The, the incident that Giovanna was talking about just a few minutes ago began when two intruders tried to get into an apartment and the, the altercations and gun violence and stabbing resulted from that. So there are times when people need to be calling police if they're in danger, if a crime is being committed. And, but there are many other functions that we have defaulted to the police that we can look at and think about shifting. And that's the kind of thing this committee can look at as well. And I can tell you internally, the staff, police department have already started to do that as well. So again, your, your police department can serve as a very important resource during this entire process, and it needs to. And then the other challenge is the, if we're going to do an emergency response alternative for mental health calls, we need a long-term, sustainable financial plan for One Door. How are we going to pay for it? And it's not as simple as simply saying, well, take some money from the police department. So those, those types of efforts are going to take some work. So I welcome some input and your thoughts and ideas. Jared?
I guess I'll kick us off since this was part of the thing that Mary Allison, Dennis and I came up with at the special meeting from June 25th that we're finally getting, getting to a month later. You know, the, I'm glad to hear Diane, the committee suggestion, because that was going to be my primary push as well, was to form a dedicated body of some sort to address these topics going forward, because it is going, you know, we could spend all night, every night at every community of the whole and every city council meeting, working on this, working on these topics. So I adamantly support forming something. I would certainly hope that there'd be an opportunity for council members to be on that committee. I certainly, I think it goes without saying, would be interested in being involved in, in doing anything along those lines and being involved in where that vision goes forward. I think that one of the other small things that I wanted to see if we could get some answers to that we've been brought up a couple of times was having council access to the unredacted UPD policies. I know we had brought it up, but we kind of went around in a circle of the discussion and I don't think we ever got a full response to Seraphin on whether or not we can review those policies. Or are we just restricted to what's publicly available?
I'll let, I'll let the chief respond.
Oh, and I'll let the city attorney respond. No, I, I think the issue, yeah, I believe there should be some, and Jared, just so that you know, after our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, I was, I was not here last week, but a couple of weeks ago, one of the things that we had done was to sit down with our current FOIA redaction specialist, Tony Weck at the city. And he was tasked with reviewing all, and I believe there are 26 different redactions in the current policy. And the reason we did that was because we would get several or people would, I want to see this policy, I want to see that. So in an attempt to preemptively just get all 163, I think there are total policies out. The redactions were initially done back in, I believe it was 2015. And so we're reviewing those particular things right now, or he is, we actually have a meeting set then next week with all the staff to say this was the redaction, this is the process and we want to keep this. Or we don't want to keep it anymore now in light of certain things we have reviewed. We don't think this is, this needs to be redacted. So that's currently ongoing. With regards to city council ability, look at all the redacted pieces of that, I, I guess I don't know exactly. And I see that Mr. Simon has, has come on board here, so I think I'll let him finish.
I'm not sure about city council looking at redactions on a FOIA request by, or FOIA response by FOIA response basis for several reasons.
Jim, this is for the, I, I think he's talking about the Urbana Police Department policies, not FOIA requests.
Well, then I, I cannot answer that because I have not seen or been requested yet to review police department policies.
Okay, so it sounds like we'll get, we'll get an answer to that one.
Okay, I, I would be very curious to know what the reasons were that we wouldn't be allowed to see them if they were and how we're supposed to consider them, if we're not allowed to actually see them. So that, that's one, that's, that's one thing. I know there's plenty, I've got a couple more, but I'll save them. I'm sure everybody else has ideas too.
Okay. Dennis, you had your hand up?
Sure. Yeah, I agree with Jared. As members of the city council in particular, it would seem like we ought to be able to have access to what the city policies of our police department are. We have the right to understand those. Now, you know, I could understand maybe redactions, you know, to the general public for certain reasons, but we, because of our elected responsibilities, I want to know what the policies are, what they entail, so that we, when we have discussions, can really evaluate the changes that should be considered. That's what I think is important.
Okay.
Can I just throw one thing in real quick?
Sure, and then Mary Alice.
I'm, I'm sorry, guys. I just remember, and Chief, the, one of the things that I wanted to mention about receiving those redacted policies was that, just the same as we like see their red out in ordinances or anything like that, I don't know how you were planning on receiving them, but if we could see what was previously redacted, if it's decided that it's going to be unredacted, if we just see it and I don't know what was redacted the first time, but I don't know what I'm looking at, you, you understand what I'm saying? Like if we change an ordinance and we read out the language and insert the new language, you, you get what I'm, you get what I'm saying?
I, I think so. And I, and I do believe, like, I know that there was some cursory work already done when I went and checked on the status of this project already, was that most of those, the types of things that had been redacted were sort of police tactical specialized techniques. So if there's some stuff in there and with this whole SWAT team might do certain things, that's generally, I think, what it does. I think there's some, a couple of sensitive areas with regards to response to bomb threat protocol-type issues. Those are the kinds of things that we're, we're talking about, I think.
Well, in, in any case, it would be great to see what was and if we decided that it wasn't, what isn't anymore, or what is going to be redacted for public if the council can still see it on our end. That, that's all I wanted to, just put that reminder in there.
Okay, Mary Alice.
Sorry about that. I wanted to thank you, Diane, for putting together that short PowerPoint. I had gone through and kind of tried to organize my thoughts after June's meeting. And I kind of came up with these three general areas that people have been discussing. One is community conversations, participation, engagement and accountability, which is a lot of what you covered in terms of what the city is already doing. The second thing was transparency, and the third thing was structural change. And so as I, as I see it, those are the three kind of general areas that we're talking about here. And just to kind of add a little bit of information to the community conversations, participation, engagement and so forth, I, I was thankful for the, the young group of high schoolers who gave a presentation at the very beginning of that meeting, and they had come up with some ideas, some that, that may already be happening, some that aren't happening. And I think it would be worthwhile to really engage with the youth and in the schools in terms of how community government works, what can we be doing to help them. So they, they offered a suggestion of a, you know, coffee with a cop, I think was their, one of the things that they had discovered. And then Giovanna had talked a bit at that meeting also about how there's not very much interaction with the police force in her community that's positive. And she was talking about COVID and delivering of, of different items. And I think that the community engagement officer that we're hiring really should be focused a lot on working with these neighborhood associations, trying to help listen to what their needs are and then bringing them back to you and to the human resource officer. So I think that that can also improve communication and really give a direct access point to people who are in the neighborhoods or individuals even, that they would be able to then talk about their concerns and things and ideas that they have. And in terms of transparency, one of the things, Diane, you and I have talked about this, is that frankly, our website is not very organized. And it was brought home today in a, in a posting on WUNO when somebody asked, well, how are we supposed to find out when these streets open? And I just use this as an example because we had forwarded some information to the, the neighborhood group about intersection opening soon. So I think that in terms of transparency, really what we need to be doing is we need to be bringing all these resources together into a cohesive website. If we have the mind towards providing information to our community members, not only with police, and we absolutely need to do that with policing, but also with public works. So one of the things that we have is the Open Data Portal. And in the Open Data Portal, we have all the budget information, we have all the police stops. There's a, there's a huge amount of information there, but it's, it's kind of hard to find. And I really think we need to take a time to think about what resources are people talking about. I'll give another example. A lot of people have been talking about evictions and eviction problems. So the Cunningham Township has an eviction prevention program. I don't know how many people know about that. There are a lot of programs out there that as a city, we need to be getting the message out to people, that these are the resources in our community that you can reach out to if you have some of these things. So I think that we need to have a really good conversation and implementation of a new way to give information to our, to the constituents. Included in that is publishing of civilian complaints. And we had talked about FOIA requests, so that can all be bundled in there with this kind of transparency idea on the website. And just kind of as an aside, I know this isn't particular to this conversation, but I did want to let the community know that we have a consolidated action plan that specifically addresses affordable housing, and there is public participation that people can do to say where they feel those funds should go. So there are other opportunities, and this is another example of something that we should be communicating, for people to be able to have input into how we use the resources that we currently have. So that goes to my third part, which is structural change. So the issue we have here is we have a lot of different organizations. We have the Urbana City, we have the Sheriff's Department, we have the court systems, we have the state's attorney's office. We have a lot of different systems that make up criminal justice in our community, and it's very complex. And frankly, there are pieces that I'm still learning as we go. And I think it's really important that we have somebody who can sit down and take an inventory of where are these gaps? What gaps are we not filling here in the, in the, from whatever power we have within the city? Now, it's going to take coordination with other entities such as the One Door policy. But I think that your idea of having a task force that specifically addresses some of these areas, I think is something that we absolutely have to do. We can't continue to dedicate most of our time at city council meetings. This really deserves its own group looking in depthly at these issues. So I'm strongly behind having a couple of task forces, because I think it's too much of a job for one task force to do. So we might have very guided information. So I'll stop at that, but those are my kind of three summarizing.
Yeah, I, I envisioned the task force, the advisory committee to, I mean, there should be an umbrella, but it needs to be very, very carefully facilitated with chunks, you know, chunk it out and assign and have subgroups focused on a particular issue once those are identified. And just on, just, I've been, I've been focused on our website since the day I took office and the staff is tired of hearing me complain about our website. And I agree, it is, it needs, well, it needs a total overhaul. We just, you know, it, it, we just have had other things that we have focused on till, till now. But the, the, I, I can't agree with you more. So that's, that has to be a higher priority for next year. And, and actually, the citizens can help with that, I think, because we have a lot of very talented. And and actually, the citizens can help with that, I think, because we have a lot of very talented designers in this community and people who can help us do that. Okay, next, Sharice.
I was just going to say that I agree with Mary Alice on practically everything she said. But the other thing is that, yeah, when we talk about the website, a few months ago, I know I had one of my constituents that called because there was this unfortunate person that was living in his car and had been living in his car. And this was like even during the winter. And the only the only resource he knew to call was the police. And he was disappointed because he said the police don't do anything. It's like they just tell him that he has to move his car to the other side of the street. So they didn't harass the gentleman, and this was definitely a mental health issue. And so I had I called Danielle, I called the Cunningham Township Office and and tried to get, you know, more information regarding this 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 young man and his and his issue. And it does come down to also that we have to remember where mental health is concerned. Right now, it is, it's not one of these things where you can force a person to get help. There's, you know, if they're not doing, if they're not showing that there's any that there is any harm to themselves or someone else in the the community, it makes it very difficult to to help them, to assist them. And the other thing that regarding the one door, I had read a an article of a city, I think it was in Oregon, that for several years have have had like a triage team that they send out, that gets sent out to every every issue that may involve, it may involve domestic violence or whatever. But it's like, you know, a social worker, an EMT worker, as well as police, as police officers that show up to that. And it's and it's been, you know, it started off really small because it was a new idea. But little by little, that that is something that started to work out better when it wasn't a total like shots fired or or something like that, but with domestic calls and 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 noise complaints and so on and so forth. They were, they had, they've been pretty successful in that. And I I thought that that would be a good template, too, for trying the one door policy.
You may, you might be referring to Eugene, Oregon cahoots.
Yeah.
Sound familiar? Yeah, that's a good one to look at.
And it's a, it's a, it seemed to be a working program that that other cities could actually use and and use as a template to try to set up their own, and I thought that would be a good template for one door. I think one door sounds like an excellent idea. I'm hoping that it will come to fruition, but like you said, we have to find the funds for it. Because you don't want it, like, you know, it's something with changes in the city and the way the city changes and administrations change, it's so easy for somebody to just come and play, come and take something that's been put in place and get rid of it. You know, we've seen that on a on a national level. And it doesn't always, it's not something that always is helpful to the citizenry. So what if if we put this in place, I would like to see it as something that could be a permanent, as as permanent as our police force.
Right, that's the difference between programmatic change, but you were looking at structural change, which is permanent. Okay, any other, any other comments? Dennis and then Jared.
Okay, so I would like to have us explore again the whole topic of traffic stops and racial biasing. Daryl Cruz has offered a lot of interesting and, yeah, I think useful comments about that. He had an op ed piece in the News Gazette last week, raising a lot of issues. I think that that's one of the issues that we would like to try to resolve finally, after I think several years of discussion about it. There's got to be some way of of becoming smarter and more wise in concerning the the public's experience and especially the African American experience of being stuck on the street, especially when it's not related to a response for an individual call for service that that indicates that there's people leaving, getting away via a vehicle. So these are, this is one of the topics I think needs to be aired out, looked at carefully. And and I'm willing to also reevaluate the presence of armed officers in the schools, the SROs. There's been a lot of comment even tonight about that. I think that it would be wiser to have accredited guy and and well-trained guidance counselors to assist in the school programs and to help the youth of the of the high school and junior high school in that the SROs are not really as, their duty is not to interact in discipline matters of the school. So if you have the police officers being present, what in case of a possible but unlikely a thousand to one experience of a active shooter in the school? But if our if our police department is eight blocks away and it's a two-minute drive, I think we have the response time to 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 do that kind of policing. But I'm not sure that the presence of armed police in the schools is making the students necessarily feel like their interests and their concerns are being answered. That's why it's really important to get get feedback from students themselves and how they feel about what is needed in their community, the schools, the school experience.
I think Jared was next, and then Bill Colbrook.
I'll yield to Bill.
Thank you, Jared. So I just wanted to respond to Dennis. Yeah, I think it's important to to study the issue of these school resource officers. You know, obviously, it's critically important to know what the students want, but in addition to the students, the parents, and then on top of that, the faculty and the staff, and even the visitors to our Urbana schools. So instead of just having opinions here on on the board, I think it's critically important as we study the SROs and the future of the SROs, what the people think that actually are impacted by the SROs, the presence or not.
Can I say something real quick? And Dennis, the other thing that I wanted, I I just want to say too is that it's not just, I mean, this year has kind of been a bust regarding how what's happened with SROs and so on and so forth. So we we really don't have any any real data that we could go from because for the most part, the school, school year was canceled as far as having children in the in the buildings themselves. But because my understanding too, where where SROs are concerned is that it's not that that guidance counselors, and it's been my experience, I'll just say this as educator, when when children are being bullied or 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 abused at school, the one thing I remember hearing a lot of, even when I would say something as a as an educator to vice principals and principals, is that, well, there's not a whole lot that we can do because you have to consider the privacy of the student and the privacy of the parents and so on and so forth. And then there's a whole other type of bureaucracy where just trying to get like the parents together with the other parents and how that that was always a problem. And in the meantime, this one little child is having, you know, anxiety attacks just showing up in the hallway. And my understanding where SROs are concerned is that if nothing else, it it gives a child a authority figure that they can go to to discuss, at least discuss the issue. And then without there being, without it being punitive to the student, to other students, it would hopefully open up a some kind of communication between two kids that just aren't, that just seem to be not getting together or somehow or whatever, and making making, trying to make ameliorate the situation. And so there there's so much bureaucracy in even trying to resolve those issues. And what I have my experience just with with kids in general is that they don't always want to even talk about what's going on or how they're dealing with that problem. And it was the hope that an SRO would open up an opportunity for them to have someone to talk to.
Well, I think, thank you. I think in the interest of time tonight, we know that there's a lot of interest in the SROs. It would remind folks that this is a policy decision for the, at the school board level, more so than at the city council level. But it's certainly a joint, it's a joint decision, but will will it, you know, there will be further discussion on that. Any other thoughts as far as these big topics that you'd like to try to take on, Jared?
So it sounds like there's a bit of agreement amongst folks that, you know, maybe forming a advisory commission is is the way to go. We've not done so since I've been on council. What kind of timeframe does it take to put something like that together? That's that's what I want to know.
It's, it has varied in the past. The last time we put a task force together was the, I think it was the pedestrian stops task force. So it, that was composed, there was at least one city council member on it, was chaired by a community member, I believe. And then there were a number of community members on that. So it's, you know, we can pull it together in a few weeks.
Okay, is that something that's largely done by the city? What's our, what's our involvement in the creation of that? Do we pass a resolution or an ordinance to authorize the creation of it?
I think so.
Okay.
Look into that. I can come back with much more detail next week. I just, I just have not had a chance to get all the details put together. But the, in general, I want it to be inclusive, meaning I want not necessarily 500 people on this advisory committee, but the process has to be inclusive so that the 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 committee has to be absolutely committed to seeking in many different ways, input from as many different parts of the community as possible, different neighborhoods, different groups, et cetera. And then I want it to be forward-looking. You know, we've spent a lot of time looking at what has happened, and we're we're focused on that as well. But we're looking at, if we're looking at systemic change, we're looking at what the future of our city is going to look like, you know, 10 years from now and 20 years from now. So it needs to be very forward-looking. And then people have to be committed to being productive and civil with each other and and working in a collaborative fashion, because that's the only way this is going to get done. And pandemic COVID is going to prevent us from a lot of in-person meetings, but, you know, people are pretty creative via Zoom. And frankly, I think the format that Hillard Hines is using, and it sounds very similar to the format that a certain trivia night is using, where you bring large numbers of people together and break up into smaller groups and then come back together. And I think we can utilize our our electronic means of communication in many different ways. So so we have to have, anybody on that committee has to go in with those kinds of that that attitude in order to make this work. But short answer to your question, I'll have a lot more information next week. How's that?
Okay, and we see that as a discussion item?
Only if you want to discuss it.
Well, I think it would be good for us to see what the idea of the vision is and get counsel input on on
Absolutely.
What that actually, what that actually looks like.
Sure. I have to go back and look and see how the other one was set up and what what legally we need to do and all that stuff.
And also the police neighborhood task force that you created or was that was created earlier.
That was created in 2004, so I was on it, but I didn't create it. But yes.
That's another example of how things can get pulled together.
Yeah, that's a much more informal group. And certainly people, that represented all the neighborhood associations. So certain people from that group would certainly want to pull in as well.
Also, what, oh, go ahead, Jared.
I think Mary Alice had her hand up.
That's fine, I'll wait.
So I, Jared, your question was was the main question I have. But I I would be remiss if I didn't say what Bill had already said several times, which is of the process of adding a civilian to the use of force committee. I just want to put that out there because he's not here and I support.
Yeah, that's that's already, the chief is on board with that, and we'll figure out how to do that. So I don't think that committee needs to talk about that.
No, I I just, in terms of, right, in terms of community participation, I felt that that was.
Yeah, that's a good thing to add. Jared.
So another small next step, or maybe not small. Chief, I had asked the last time that we had spoken about getting the body camera policy up on the website. I was hoping I could get an update about where we're at with that and still offer my services to help create anything if needed.
So you're not talking about the policy, you're actually talking about the slides from the presentation from two weeks.
Yeah, 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 the slides, the description of the policy, the flow, all of that kind of stuff.
Sure. I wasn't here last week, I don't know if that is up or not. I know the policy itself is up. I can, we'll get that.
You want the PowerPoint up?
The PowerPoint with the, in with the FOIA flow in an actual readable format instead of that blurry mess you guys got.
Yeah, I mean, the PowerPoint is like, you know, that's that's just one piece because there's a lot of information, a lot of detail contained in that PowerPoint. You know, that's just the outer layer of that big dense onion. And what what I was describing was having the information that is buried within the layers of those onion in in that onion in there as well. Because it's not just like, hey, you know, here's what we talked about, here's some PowerPoints, because, you know, each one of those things, you know, we all had questions about each one of those things. So when I was talking about putting up body camera information on the website, you know, we need to get into a level of detail for people to be able to understand. And, you know, that that flow chart is one one example of those things.
That sounds like you're going to need some more discussion offline as far as what sorts of things you'd like to see in that.
Okay, happy to do so.
Okay, Bill Colbrook.
I just wanted to help Jared out. Jared, you had mentioned a frequently asked questions section. So I'm just reminding you of what you had said in regards to that.
Yeah, 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 something along those lines were the kinds of things that people have been inquiring about. We can provide direct answers to right on the city website for easy access. And then we can have in-depth, more in-depth explainers of like, here's what FOIA law is, and here's how it says that this is how the flow chart of releasing information goes. And here's when we turn body cameras off, here's when we turn them off, et cetera, et cetera. I am happy to go into detail about that with you.
Well, if you have suggestions on which FAQs you would like to see on there, send them, send them on to the chief.
Sure.
That would be a good start. And that goes the entire council, too. Is that a finger up, Sharice?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's not that finger.
No, it's the pointer.
It's the pointer. The other thing, I had a very interesting conversation with Carol Ammons. And she had brought up, and I think this would be a good thing to do in conjunction with our 10 shared principles. She had brought up, and and I went and pulled down the and Evanston, the city of Evanston, and how they had a resolution. And I think it would be great for the, uh, in, in conjunction and in concert with the 10 shared principles, uh, to end structural racism and achieve racial equity. And it's an excellent resolution, uh, that I think we could use as a template in, in doing exactly that. And it also discusses, um, um, let me go back here. Um, an issue regarding, uh, uh, a type of reparations fund. But I don't want to walk, I don't want to run before we even crawl. But, um, in subcommittees, it's an excellent, uh, I, I think an idea for something that Urbana could possibly, uh, adapt. And, um, to make it, just to keep us on our toes regarding, uh, how what our commitment actually is to communities that are, um, that, uh, and to our, our police force regarding our commitment to keep, to make a, a more equitable culture here in Urbana. And not just Urbana Police Force, but U of I Police Force and, uh, the other law enforcement agencies. Uh, something that, that we might all be able to, um, to endeavor, uh, to do.
Okay.
So if.
Yeah, if you can send that information on, please do.
I will. I'll, I'll send them in. Okay.
Uh, Jared?
So one of the things, uh, that I don't want to have happen, uh, is for these topics to, to go away. And I, you know, counsel, fellow council members, this is a question for you all. Uh, you know, some of us are even just by, uh, happenstance, whether by purposeful request of council or not, uh, we've had topics related to the police on most all of our agendas since, uh, Mary Alice and I, uh, started getting them on about a month ago. And, uh, in, not in lieu of, but, uh, in addition to the work that's going on there, I would like, uh, to see, uh, continued, uh, topics at each meeting. Uh, to the point of maybe even in which we get an initial report from, uh, said commission of, or, or, uh, advisory committee or something along those lines. Um, so one of the things I was going to suggest tonight was asking about, uh, topics for future meetings that we can discuss. And it sounds like we already have, uh, some coming up, Diane, on, on future ones.
We have a lot coming up. We have, um, the, um, when, when Hillard Hines' report and review is ready to be brought to council, that'll be coming up. We have the one door presentation. Um, we have.
Diane?
Yes.
Uh, so what, what I would, uh, just quickly suggest is that, um, can you send us a calendar with every police-related topic that we have for a meeting coming up that you know of right now? After, not, not right now, but.
It's probably, and it's probably every meeting in August. So, so that takes care of August. So.
Um, so we can see that if we've got something else in addition to then, uh, fellow council members, we can, uh, see if there's a, an additional topic that, uh, we'd like to see added to one of those discussions. But that would be useful as well, at least for the, you know, if we, if we know we've got one every, every meeting in August, we'll keep working, uh, working the issues. But that was one of the things that I wanted to encourage council members to think about is as we go, let's, uh, keep making sure we're on, on these topics as we, as we move forward.
But you also have to keep in mind the staff time involved to prepare for presenting these topics. And if a, if they're also supporting and working with the task force on individual items as well. You know, we're going to need to be very, very thoughtful about how much we're committing to so that it's done right. And I think the focus should be on the, the big topics in the advisory committee.
I, I, I understand. And I understand the city has, uh, a lot of, uh, other business. And, you know, we were running these, uh, four-hour meetings and we have a lot of things we have to cover. Uh, just, you know, making it known as I have throughout, uh, this entire time that I, I don't think that there is anything more important that we do right now than concentrating on, on, on this. So every, I'm fully aware of what asking for staff commitments on these things are calling for. But I believe that it is the most important thing we're doing and that's why I keep asking for them.
Well, then I would say tune into the CPRB meeting on the Wednesday for the use of force training. Cause that's, that's a very, very important, fundamental, um, source of information.
Be in attendance.
Okay. Um, any wrap-up comments? We do have some other items of business we need to cover. I would ask the council if there are other major topics that you think this task force or subcommittee should, or this advisory committee should focus on, please send them in and I'll put them, I'll pull them all together. And then we'll need to decide, probably pare it down a little bit and see what you want to focus on. But at least we'll know what you want to, what you have to choose from. And Bill Brown will be back next week to contribute to the discussion. Jared?
Just one more quick item, since we're kind of in a discussion of police adjacent, but kind of just a public input. Uh, I did have a couple of people who had hit me up and I know when we were originally doing the meetings, we were kind of giving a verbal instruction to people about how to join the Zoom thing. And I think we're all just assuming that everybody knows how to use Zoom at this point. But I had a couple of people who did not, uh, understand how to get in and were in, uh, the participant window, but could not get their hand raised. And I wasn't able to tell them how to, how to get there in time. So we might want to consider, uh, re-verbalizing that for people who are in attendance at the meetings again at the beginning.
It's a good reminder. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much and, um, much more to come. All right. We'll move on to the reports of the standing committees. This would be council member Sharice Hershey.
Yes, um, I'd like to bring to the city council for, well, consideration. I think Dennis, you had something first before, you, you know, you had something to say.
I guess, uh, this will be a.
Have something to say. It also.
This will be a staff question. Has item A, the ordinance approving the, uh, amendment to the comp plan been pulled from the agenda?
Uh, we would like to have a couple more weeks to finalize the changes that have been under discussion. And so as Dennis indicated, uh, considering that on August 10th would be preferable.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on that?
No, we're, are we keeping this in committee then?
Uh, the intent was, um, well, the motion last week was to send it to this meeting without a, uh, recommendation. So it is staff's desire that it goes to council. Also, you know, just continue without recommendation and then we'll bring some slightly tweaked language.
So for the clerk, I guess, do we need a motion to move that on to the August 10th meeting? I see a nodding of a head. Okay. So we need a motion to move this ordinance 2020 dash 07 dash 038 on to the, is it a council meeting on the 10th? Or committee? To the council meeting on August 10th?
So I would make that motion because it's part of my interest to do that.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
Highly appreciated also, by the way. Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Sharice?
Hey, the next is, uh, item B, ordinance number 2020 07, uh, dash 039. An ordinance approving an amendment to the 2005 comprehensive plan, Urbana bicycling wayfinding plan, plan case 2402 CP, uh, 2-0. And I'd like to bring it to the, uh, council for approval.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And last item is, uh, resolution 2020 07 033R.
Yes, um, bringing to the, uh, council, city council for, hopefully for approval, um, resolution number 2020 07 033R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant for market at the square, Linkup Illinois Grant SNAP Double Value Program 2020.
Is there a second?
Certainly.
Second.
Okay, I missed that. Who, who was first?
Dennis.
I think, I think Jared was. I'll take it. I'll take it. I'll take it.
Jared took it. All right. Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jared. And Lori, you had comments?
There was a question last week and I just wanted to follow up. So Mary Alice, you had requested a little information about how much money is left. So, uh, typically the market gets two match grants. The one this evening, the one for Linkup, uh, we received $4,000 this, this year. But we were able to roll over $5,000 from last year. So we've just started tapping into that one. So in that grant, uh, we have about $8,000 left. Um, the other grant is one that we're coming to committee the whole next week, uh, for acceptance. However, we've already spent the money. Um, so we got that one right early in the season. That is from the Illinois Farm Credit for $5,000 and that one's pretty much exhausted.
Okay. Thanks for the update, Lori. Appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Sharice. Um, next up is reports of special committees. Reports of officers. We'll just give council a heads up. There will be bringing a budget amendment to council next week, which will include, among other things, I don't remember all the details, but will be, uh, additional funding for the full-time human, uh, relations officer, among other things. And I believe next week, Lori can correct me, we may be able to give you a report on how the, um, business assistance grants using, um, the CDBG money, um, has been distributed.
Yes. So, uh, we're making announcements to the individual, um, business owners and managers this week. So we hope to be able to provide an update to council on not only that program, but also where we are with the housing assistance grants too.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Last item of business is new business, which is ordinance number 2020 dash 07 dash 040. An ordinance naming a street, avenue, alley, or other public place. And we're changing Plantation Point, which is a street in Stone Creek subdivision to River Birch Lane. Uh, Carol?
Yes, you have the, um, you have the ordinance before you and a, and a brief memo outlining how this, how this came to me as, uh, in my role as the interim public works director. And this arose out of discussions of the owners of the properties along Plantation Point in Stone Creek. And the letter from the, um, the folks that were on the prevailing side of the conversation is included in the packet and they, and they took a vote of the property owners there. And, um, their first choice for an alternative name was River Birch Lane, which, um, they, um, they found was consistent with the fact that we're a tree city and the fact that they have, um, river birches, um, along that street as well as in the subdivision. And it's also the name of a, um, of a golf course, which would con- con- uh, continue the, um, naming convention of the streets in the Stone Creek subdivision. But what, what, um, what, um, caused them to take this action was, and in their words, the, they wanted to change the street name to, uh, quote, "because of the inferences to a plantation's historical role in slavery, in addition to other definitions of the word." So that's what, um, that's what prompted them to, to take this action. Um, I also have included a letter from, um, a couple of folks who chose to remain anonymous that also live on Plantation Point, um, and they were in opposition. And their concern was that, um, there's a, you know, there's a, um, a burden associated with, uh, for the, for those property owners associated with the naming, um, changing the name of the street. And public works staff, um, vets, uh, requests for, um, street name changes, not that we've had very many, um, through all of city government as well as, um, various, um, regional and county offices. Um, Met Cat in particular, the post office in particular. And no objections were raised. So I recommend that you approve the ordinance changing the name, uh, the street name Plantation Point to River Birch Lane.
And I, I do want to acknowledge there was, um, considerable community support, um, for this as well. So any, um, can we get a, uh, motion? Mary Alice?
Can I, can I ask a staff question quickly?
Oh, sure.
So, um, I, I'm not opposed to this ordinance, but I'm curious why it didn't come to, to committee before it came to council?
Only because, um, we felt that time was of the essence, given that there's a strong desire to take action in this, in, in this general area of, of this topic area regarding, um, racial equity. And so if you'll notice, it's very little time elapsed in order for us to even process this application. And so in that spirit, we brought it directly to council.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Bill?
I just want to make a comment. Um, this is in my ward. Uh, I've spoken with, um, every, uh, household, every resident, um, that lives on that block. Uh, spent about three hours and, and was at their doorstep as long as they would allow me to. And although it appears to be six, two of the 11 residences that are currently occupied, because there is one other house that's currently being built. Uh, I, although I think I've, I perhaps have seen the future homeowners come and go. I've never personally spoken with them yet. But I did, uh, speak to every single, uh, household on that block. And there is overwhelming support on the block for this, uh, this name change. There is only one, um, resident on the block that is opposed. Um, and it was, uh, for some of the reasons already stated, because of, uh, the, the expense that would go towards having to change driver's license and, and other, other legal documents. Um, but it, you know, kind of the, um, I guess, you know, just the time it would take to get those things done as well. Uh, I find it curious if there was two people on that one document that were opposed. Uh, if there was two people, I didn't meet the second one. I lived, like I said, I literally talked to everybody. And, and there may have been somebody initially that was opposed. Um, but by the time I got to them, uh, maybe they weren't, uh, as opposed as they were when they, when they first did it. Now, having said that, there was a couple residents that, um, were kind of middle of the road. They weren't really for it and they weren't adamantly against it. Uh, they were middle of the road and they said they were in the middle of the road. Uh, kind of like, yeah, you know, they, they really didn't want to be put down as a, as a strong yes. But at the same time, they didn't want to be put down as a strong no, uh, because they, they clearly understood the, um, the reason behind it and that, you know, they were in essence in approval of. So I'll just go on record to say, having spoken to everybody, there's just one, uh, that currently lives on the block, uh, that's opposed. Now, there could be somebody that, that's, that's, um, unnamed and opposed, uh, but they just happen to own property on the, on the block. Um, but I, I'm not for sure if that's a situation or not. I just wanted to give that input to the rest of the council.
Thank you. Um, can we get a motion and then have discussion, please? Bill?
Since it's in my ward, I'd like to do the motion for approval, uh, for ordinance number 202, 2020 dash 07 dash 040. An ordinance naming a street, avenue, alley, or other public place, changing Plantation Point to River Birch Lane.
Is there a second?
A second.
Sharice? Okay. Okay. Discussion. Sharice?
The, I guess my question, because I can. The, I guess my question, because I can understand what Bill was saying is like, you know, as far as people having to change legal documents and so on and so forth, is there any kind of grace period that, that the residents will get to, you know, meaning, meaning this? I know they have to change their stuff, but I also know that the city is going to have to change signs and so on and so forth. And the, the post office is going to be more, has to be aware and everything. So is there a grace period between, or what is the grace period between the, the name, the street change and when the new signage goes up?
Well, according to the ordinance, the, the the ordinance doesn't even take full effect until 30 days after notices are given to the county clerk and to the post office about the name change. So there's, so the effective, the effective date will be a month from now approximately. And then after that point, I don't know how long, for instance, the post office will deliver mail that's addressed to Plantation Point. But it's not like it's forwarding. It's, it's literally just going to a place that is now has a different name. Some of the documents, and I don't know, and I don't know how long it takes before you have to change your address on your driver's license, for instance. But some of the things that the folks were concerned about, like changing their wills and changing deeds and so forth. I mean, Jim can weigh in on this, but the, 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 the governing, the, the legal description is what governs in, in those kind of documents as opposed to an address. So, so I don't know that there's any, that someone is even compelled to change those documents.
So with, does the city, like, for instance, you know, I know there are certain documents that have to be stamped or approved or whatever by county, a city clerk or county clerk or, or something like that. Does the city keep on, on record, for example, with the, with the street name change, a particular document that may be filed already with them? But I'll just say like a lawsuit or something that it, you know, it's, it was Plantation, Plantation Point or it'll say River Birch Lane formerly Plantation Point or anything like that? That's what, I guess that's what I was wondering too.
I, I, I guess I don't know in what context that would exist. I mean, we have the ordinance. So if somebody needed to have sort of legal evidence of the change, I think we'd use the ordinance.
Okay, that, yeah, that's what I was hoping, something like that.
There's, there is a lot that has to be changed, which is why we do not change street names. It, it happens very, very, very rarely. I mean, it's just, it's just a lot of work. So, so that's why. Yeah. Bill, Colebrook?
I've got a question for staff or maybe Jim Simon. So I'd be remiss if I didn't ask, on behalf of the residents that I talked to. Some of them have said, you know, by no fault of theirs, that this is going to cost them money. Is there any way to get perhaps some fees that are, especially that are city fees? If they had to change that, to get those fees waived? Or is there any other way on behalf of the city to the residents to remunerate maybe some funds to them? So it's, it's a no sum game for them, once again, because in, in their opinion, this was no fault of theirs. You know, they just kind of, kind of got swept up in the, in the moment.
Bill, that would be more of a policy question, because it impacts the budget. There's nothing legal that would prevent that, because the name change is being presented by the city. Probably the most critical documents that the homeowners would need to worry about would be their driver's licenses. And it would be no different, frankly, than if they moved to another location. Go in and get their driver's license changed. I don't know what the timeframe is for doing that. Voter registration would likely require that, and they would want their voter registration card changed. I don't think there's a fee for that. And possibly if they have a passport, though your address does not appear on your passport, it is within the federal records. And if you have one of these bypass type cards for speeding through airports, that would have to be changed. There are a lot of things, credit cards, but that would be no different than your typical address change. The other thing they could do to assure that they continue to get mail for a period of time is to, even though the post office will have the new address, they should probably register, at least ask the post office, register the new address through the mail forwarding service, and that can be done online, and there's no cost for that. So they should get their mail. As pieces come in, they can advise creditor, your credit card, their mortgage company, et cetera. It is very important for them to notify their mortgage company. So the mortgage company does not think that they sold their house without notifying the mortgage. Because if they think that, that could trigger what's called the due on sale clause. So they need to go through all of their legal documents. Wills, there's no rush for that, because the wills and trusts are in the name of the individuals. They do put the address on. But that's easily traced, you know, an error could pull up the ordinance, and that would take care of that. But for convenience, at some point, they should do that.
I appreciate that. And I guess I've got another question as well, is whoever communicated with MetCAD, so a couple residents have a safety concern. So when this is changed, is MetCAD going to flip a switch and, and then automatically any calls for emergency services to Plantation Point, you know, they would be automatically redirected to River Birch Lane? And there would be a seamless transition, because, you know, frankly, the way they put it is, you know, they wouldn't want an ambulance or a fire truck or a police car to, to be delayed even by a few seconds by any confusion of the new street or the, or the, of the changes in the street name.
I, I believe Public Works would notify MetCAD, and certainly our fire department can notify MetCAD. They maintain what they call run cards. And that run card, if somebody's around to make the change, can be updated probably within minutes. They go into their system and update it. They're going to have a transition problem, and I don't know how MetCAD handled it.
I, I let me, I'll just break in here. That, that's probably the single most important change that we need to make sure happens from the, the city and county. And so yes, it will be done.
And that, that's what I was going to ask, just make sure somebody on the city.
There's a process, there's a system for that. So, yeah. Yeah. Sorry, Jim. Okay, any other questions? Discussion, Dennis?
I just want to thank you, Bill, for doing a personal survey on the block to find out what people think. I know that I was involved with the request for changing North Thurmond Drive at one time, and early in my career here on City Council, to Flexing Gate Drive. And the only business on the block wasn't Flexing Gate, because they didn't actually have the door facing that block or that city street. So ultimately, we honored the the only business who had an address on that street not to change it. I guess it was kind of insulting for the owner of Flexing Gate. But it's, it's due diligence to go out there and ask people really what they think, because you know, not everybody's going to enjoy the change and the responsibility. But if it sounds like they, they they volunteer to make the change, the city's not requesting that they make the change, that they've, the neighborhood has decided to do it and come forward. So you know, I'm sure they can handle whatever whatever legal fees or inconveniences can be done to make that a permanent reality.
And I, I do want to acknowledge this effort was led among the residents by Angie Dimmitt. She did, she did the legwork, the homework, and communicating with the neighbors and worked very closely with the Atkins Group. And also, they communicated with the Division of Athletics, because of course, U of I now has an interest in the golf course. So so they, they covered the bases to do this. And again, it's not easy. So, so it's why it doesn't happen very, very, very rarely.
It's not easy, but it's thoughtful that they would consider it, I think.
Yes, it was, it was, it was the right thing to do.
Can I just add one other comment?
Yes.
Kind of in the spirit of all the things that we are grappling with here in Urbana. So a couple people told me that they were personally aware of people that had perhaps considered moving to that block and actually reconsidered and did not move there because of the name. So I just want to put that out there, that that was just thoughts that were, that was expressed to me, that they had personal knowledge of, of a couple people. So in, in the spirit of, of what seems to be right, I think this is the right thing to do.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, because there are still some vacant lots on that block. So opportunities for investment on River Birch Lane are, are, are waiting for people. Okay. I think it's time. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And with no further business before the City Council, tonight we are adjourned. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Alan Axarod's hand is up. Are you still available to speak? There he is. Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much, Diane. I really appreciate that. It's been a very interesting day. Would you mind putting the clock up, please? All righty. So the main thing that I wanted to start off with, and I apologize earlier, I had walked out of a Wi-Fi zone and my phone shut off. Is that I actually live in a neighborhood that has experienced violence. I'm not speaking about defunding the police from a privileged, never experienced this background. I've had a neighbor who shares the same driveway as me robbed at gunpoint. The house across the street from me has been riddled with bullets. So it frustrates me a little bit when I hear somebody whose community has experienced violence. And when they are hurting and they are suffering, they turn to the existing systems that work, and the politicians who should know better decide then to elevate their voice to further an agenda that is not backed by research. So it is grossly disappointing to me that it seems that that might have been happening during this city council meeting, and I'd urge people to reflect on that. Secondly, we have a lot of issues in this community, one of which is the incidence of a motorist trying to attack protesters this past weekend in Champaign. That constitutes the second motorist attack in Champaign-Urbana. There was one last month in Urbana, near the intersection of University and Lincoln. So there were no charges filed in that instance. And in this most recent instance, we see the police not they're basically dragging their feet in pressing charges. So one of the things that I would like to recommend, given that there's been roughly about 60 vehicle attacks in the country in the last month, and two of them have happened in Champaign-Urbana, that the City Council considers adding to the agenda a resolution decrying motorist attacks on protesters as violence, as a chargeable offense, which it is. And also supporting the protesters' right to express their voice. That is protected by the First Amendment, but clearly, it doesn't stop violence by being protected by the First Amendment. So we're asking for that additional consideration. The other aspect that I want to bring up is that we are facing a utility shut-off from Ameren, starting with notices being sent out this Wednesday, July 29th. They have sent this both in a letter and a tweet to me. The reason that this is really concerning is because there are families who are struggling to survive a pandemic right now. And when the Illinois Housing Development Association conservatively, conservatively estimated 500,000 homes at risk of eviction, which is double the number that they've helped in 53 years, it is unreasonable to assume that the state supplementation to life will be sufficient. So I ask that there be further action there. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And referencing the incident last month regarding a motorist and, and the protest, we, I will bring some details next week on that particular incident. It was different from what happened in Champaign. So I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to speak without the, the police report information, but it was different from what happened in Champaign. And we absolutely do support and have supported for the, for the past couple of months, people's right to peacefully protest. In fact, there was a protest today, in fact, a car parade. So anyway, with that, oh, and I did, I did forget one thing. Daryl Cruz also sent an email. I apologize for not mentioning it earlier. Those, that text of that email will be incorporated into the meeting agenda, or the meeting record as well. And with that, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much.
Bye, everybody.
Night.